That's all you gotta do. I have no problem.
You do?
No, I haven't seen anything come through.
Okay. We'll wait another minute.
You know how it is, after so many times, I move on to the next issue. He's got the ball in his court, he just has to... That's...he was one of the reasons why I did away with that moratorium on parking in public space for granted. There was no parking in public...no new parking in public space granted at the end of the year. I ended that. It was just in that particular case, he didn't get his parking. Sucker never replied for it. But I think that'll be...and that'll look pretty good there. We get that out of the way and take him to park the sign down there. What do you think?
Yes. Okay. Next one. Lovely one, please take the chairs. The clerk, please call the roll.
The mayor.
Here.
Councillor Unright.
Here.
Councillor Myers.
Here.
Councillor Clad.
Here.
Councillor Walker.
Here.
Councillor Burlow.
Here.
Councillor Van Buren.
Here.
All present here.
Thank you. This is the public hearing regarding the proposed amendment to the Code of the City of Oswego, Chapter 85, Buildings Vacant. We do have one speaker who has signed up to present, that is Connie Cosmento. You want to come up Connie? State your name and your address and tell us what's on your mind.
My name is Connie Cosmento, 95th West Cuba Street, First Ward, and I have been acting as chairman of the Quality of Life Committee. Thank you, Mayor, councillors, members of the audience. The amendment that the council is considering tonight addresses vacant buildings, buildings that are not being occupied, are unsecured, and basically abandoned, and to establish a program for identifying and registering these vacant properties, and to identify the responsibility of the owners, and finally to facilitate the rehabilitation of these vacant properties. This would additionally build a database for the city to use for future use. By all accounts, vacant properties are a curse. Just ask anyone who lives next to a drug den, a boarded-up fire trap, an unattended building, or a trash-filled block. But abandonment often seems beyond the control of local officials, and it rarely incites a sense of urgency beyond the neighbors on the block where it occurs. Research shows that vacant properties are an expense that local government simply cannot afford. Such properties produce no or little property tax income, but they require plenty of time, attention, and money. Unsecured buildings are three times more likely to have police calls for a variety of reasons. Fires are more likely to break out at these types of properties. City taxpayers subsidize care such as grass, no-removal, animal trappings, et cetera. Research shows that houses within 150 feet of a vacant or abandoned property experienced a net loss of $7,627 in property value. Vacant properties reduce city tax revenues in three ways. They are often tax delinquent, their low value means they generate little in taxes, they depress property values across an entire neighborhood. Property taxes remain the single largest source of tax revenue under local control. So this revenue loss is substantial and is made up by the rest of the taxpayers. Although vacancies are often the result of larger forces, to take no action simply allows the problem to grow worse. At this time, the city has no local law that deals with vacant buildings. So on behalf of the Quality of Life Committee and the city taxpayers, I encourage the council to vote yes on the vacant properties chapter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cosmento. Is there anyone else who would like to comment in the public hearing? Hearing none, will the clerk please...okay, I have a motion to...
Motion to adjourn in public hearing, your honor.
Councillor Van Buren, second. Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 We'll go into the public session now. We do have some speakers who signed up. Again, it's approximately five minutes, try to keep it within that limit. The first speaker this evening is Michael Neupuff, doctor. Are you here? And when you come up, just simply state your name and your address.
Could somebody be able to pass this out to the councilman?
Certainly.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Gillan, city councilmen, members of the administration, and members of the community. I come here tonight not to point fingers or embarrass anybody, but I need to talk about a situation that I think illustrates significant deficiencies in the way our city government is operating. I come here tonight to talk on behalf of Dr. Carmen Batista Detor. Dr. Carmen usually doesn't need any help speaking on her own, but this situation is so distressing to her that she has trouble speaking about it. Dr. Carmen, as her patients call her, owns a medical building at 177 West Fourth Street in Oswego. By some background, it is an historic building built by the Kingsford family 160 years ago. It was usually used as their carriage house initially and later their garage. In 1920, the building was sold to the Dante Alighieri Lodge, which is an Italian social club named after the famous Italian poet. It was the foremost Italian meeting place for decades in the city of Oswego. They are the ones that put the odd-looking metal structure on top of the building, which supported the roof and allowed vertical supports to be removed from the second floor. The Dante Alighieri Club added a bowling alley in about 1950 to the east side of the brick building, and it remained in existence as the last manual pin-setting bowling alley in the whole area until about the late 1980s. At that time, the Alighieri Club had some problems, the bowling alley was removed, the bar that was in the brick building was replaced and moved to the former bowling alley, and the building was sold to two developers, Mr. Grasso and Mr. Penfield. They tore down two buildings to the south of the brick building. In 1993, and this is my interest, in 1993, I purchased the building from them and spent several hundred thousand dollars fixing it up into a medical office building and a second-floor cardiac rehabilitation center. In 2003, Dr. Carmen Batista Detor and her former husband bought the building from me and have remained there as their medical office building since that time. The Dante Alighieri Club closed about seven years ago, times being what they were, and the building sat there idle. About a year ago, a company called DCI, or Dialysis Clinic Incorporated, out of Tennessee, purchased the building with the idea of building a dialysis center at that time. The first thing we were ever notified, Dr. Carmen was never notified of any time of any type of renovations in the building until suddenly a construction crew showed up and started cordoning off the area and ripping into the building, tearing it apart. This is the first she had ever heard of anything being done next door. She hired a contract engineer to look into the situation since she was never notified about it. The engineer said a building permit with a variance to tear down the building and reattach the new building in the same footprint had been granted to DCI. Nobody knows how that variance and building permit came about. I called the city attorney and said, "What should we do about this?" And her recommendation was hire a lawyer, which is what Dr. Carmen did. The lawyer looked at the original deed from the DA Lodge to Penfield and Grasso, and in that original deed, until all future owners, there was supposed to be a four-foot easement to allow structural changes to the building if necessary, four feet. The building plan that DCI had joined the building within one inch of her building. We wondered how that came about. Dr. Carmen met with Mayor Gillan and Amy Birdso, the new planning and zoning official, and asked them what should be done. Her former lawyer recommended suing the city because there was no signs of anything being stopped. Dr. Carmen says, "I don't want to sue the city. I live here. I just want something done to protect my building." And it was recommended that she be referred to the law firm of Bonn Schenick and King, where she met with a gentleman, Mr. John Allen, who by the way does legal work for the city of Oswego. Mr. Allen looked into the situation and found out in his words, quote, "The wrong building permit had been given to DCI." He talked to Mayor Gillan, he talked to the city attorney. At this point, we expected building to stop on the area next door, but it wasn't. The footing was put right up within one inch of Dr. Carmen's building. Mr. Allen's contention was that the building permit was given for a non-conformational use, non-conformational use. If you look in city code, it says that a building permit can only be given as a non-conformational use if that building that was being torn down had not been vacant for more than one year. That's the city code. That building sat there idle for three years or more. Mr. Allen said sue the city. Carmen said, "I don't want to sue the city. I live here." A letter was written by the city attorney to DCI, quote, "The validity of the building permit is in question," end quote. "We recommend that you work out with Dr. Detor your situation." That was all the city did. Dr. Carmen met with DCI. DCI said, "We're a medical facility. If we halt construction at this point, we have to go to Albany for authorization, permission to change the building plan. It's going to set us back months with thousands of dollars. We can't do it." And they refused to compromise. The nephrologist who's been working in the Pennies Plaza, get this, said to Carmen, "Our lease is up next spring. If we don't move into this building, patients are going to have to drive to Syracuse for their dialysis three times a week, like it's Dr. Batista Detor's fault that this is happening." Mr. Allen, who does work for the city, says, "I'll set you up with a lawyer to sue. It's going to cost you thousands of dollars, but you've got a legitimate case." The engineer says, "You need a minimum of 12 feet to allow building renovations to be done, and you can look on your pictures there, the amount of damage that's been done to Dr. Batista Detor's east side of the building. It's going to cost thousands of dollars to repair the damage." None of this she ever asked for, none of this was ever brought onto her. She's the victim, but none of this is being done in her behalf. City code says the building should be 25 feet away. Dr. Carmen's asking for 12 feet. That doesn't seem so ridiculous. So what role does the city of Oswego have to play in this? This is a planning board meeting from June of 2013. In that, DCI went to the planning board asking to put a canopy over the building that was there so patients wouldn't be wet when they came to the dialysis center. There was no mention of tearing the building down and building a new one. All they asked for was a variance to build a canopy. Mr. Leota said it was going to require several variances and that all members in the neighborhood would have to be notified. That never happened. Dr. Carmen knew nothing about it. We next found out that they were tearing the building down by the construction crew was there. Nobody notified her. How did a building permit ever go through planning board, zoning board, fire department, with nobody ever being notified? That's what we want to find out. The wrong building permit was given. How did that happen? It happened because the Office of Code Enforcement, which might have been able to understand this, was abolished. The fire department, which does a great job fighting fires, is not experienced in what building permits need to be authorized. The wrong building permit was given. The city did not step up and accept culpability. The cascade of events was created by inefficiencies, inaccuracies of how our city government authorized things, lack of culpability. And finally, and most distressing, is the lack of support for Dr. Batista Detor. She didn't want to sue. She just wants to get back seeing patients. That's what she does best. She wants her building intact. She's a resident of the city. She's a taxpayer. She just wants to work here, and she wants her building kept safe, and that's all she's asked for. And what we're upset about is that nobody in the city government has stepped up to help her. So my question to you folks is, now you know the facts, what are you going to do about it?
Thank you, Dr. Neupuff. The next speaker is Mr. James Toy. Mr. Toy?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and...boy, after that, I don't know, it's kind of tough to follow that one up, but it kind of runs along the same lines, that the city government and the knee-jerk responses to some of the things that we've done in this city, and I understand that the city government, there's more to it than most common people know, got to rob Peter to pay Paul, whatever the case may be, but I'm here this evening to speak to you directly about the knee-jerk response that this city made in giving a foreign company the responsibility of policing one of the best natural fisheries in the Northeast. Now, I speak for myself, I can also speak for several people that I know personally that have come under extreme hardship based on the decisions made by this city government to allow a foreign company to run the river. We have noise complaints, we have all kinds of things going on. We just took a 43% increase in taxes in this city, and we have allowed a company that is operating on foreign soil to knock one of the best tourism things that we ever had in this city. Not for Harbor Fast, nothing can touch the amount of people that used to come into this city for the sole purpose of fishing trophy waters. And what have we done? As a city government, you have allowed a foreign company that does nothing except worry about shareholders and profitability. They have gauged the water levels on this river for 80 years. Go to the USGA site and find out every single time the water has gone up. My most recent experience is why I'm here this evening. I received a phone call after I spoke with my councilman and the president of the council in regards to a situation that happened in the river a week and a half ago. Now, I will use this as a reference. Today, I spent nine hours fishing. Over the course of the last three years, if I spent nine hours on the water fishing, that siren would go off eight to 10 times in that nine-hour period. Not once today. You guys make it official, it goes into paper, and these people decide that they want to stop doing it. Not once in nine hours did that siren go off today. Not once. Why? All of a sudden, they got all the answers? All of a sudden, everybody goes to Pulaski now instead of coming here? Nine hours, there wasn't 40 guys on the river. 20 years ago, nine hours on the river, there'd be 500 people on that river, spending money in this town with local businessmen, hotels, grocery stores, providing taxes for this city. Now, on the heels of that, last Sunday, I went fishing. I was there an hour, and I left for fear of my own life. I entered the water outside of the red zones that had been designated to the foreign powers to govern the river. The siren goes off. Everybody that fishes within the jurisdiction of those red zones is required to leave the water or face prosecution for trespass. However, what transpired after that was short of lunacy. One of the guys, one of the two men that were on the wall, then gets on the blowhorn, and again, I am outside their jurisdictional zone. I do not have to leave the water. I have fished these waters for 40 years. Since I was 12 years old, I have fished these waters with zero problems. Grown men make decisions every single day. You have to live with those consequences and accept those consequences for the decisions you make. This is big water fishing. You don't take chances. I'm standing outside their zone, their man gets on the blowhorn and says, "You got to get out of the water." I just shake my head with my back to him and continue fishing. He does not have the authority to remove me from that river. I was in a safe zone, I'm doing what I like to do. At that point, that wasn't good enough for him. The 30 guys that were already around the spillway were standing on the shore waiting to go back to fishing. He then gets on the blowhorn and decides that if you don't get out of the water, I'm not letting these guys go back in. Now, what transpired after that made me leave the water. I have grown men throwing softball-sized rocks at me, standing knee-deep in fast water. How many of you gentlemen would stand in that water long? I'd like about five minutes with the guy on the wall, though. It's not funny. In 40 years of fishing, I have never been put in a perilous situation as to deal with 30 guys throwing rocks at me in fast-moving water. Now, I brought that to the attention of my councilman and the chamber president. I also brought it to the attention of the people at Brookfield. Now, unlike the city, I was able to get a phone call back from the director of operations at the plant here in the city. Why is that? Because they thought there was some culpability on their part. It's the only reason I can come up with that they would make a phone call to John Q. Public. Me? I'm a small fish in a no pond, okay? This is a multi-billion-dollar company, and you've allowed them to reap thousands, if not millions, off our streets over the last three years. And as a tax-paying citizen, I have to absorb a 43% increase in taxes while this city government decides to let them run our river. Now, I know there's perilous chances that you take every single day. You get in a car, more people are killed in car accidents than they are in fishing accidents, and that's a fact. But yet, we don't let somebody else run our cars for us, do we? So why has this city allowed this company to continually brutalize our economic base and our tourism industry? This fishery is not going away anytime soon.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is John Elmer. John, you step up, please, and give your name and your address.
John Elmer? I'm...we have offices at 33 West First Street in Fulton, New York. I'm in an office at the 800 Starbuck Ave in Mottertown, New York. Good evening, Mayor Gillan and councilmembers. I appreciate Mr. Toy's comments tonight, and we heard them. Thank you, Mr. Toy. Let me first say that Mr. Toy spoke with our operations manager, and it is our procedure to follow up on stakeholder complaints and issues that we are alerted to when we're alerted to them, especially in this case, because we're aware of the issues that have faced the city with regard to our public safety initiatives that we put together with the city and with the New York State DEC to protect the fishermen in this particular area. Let me read a memo that we prepared today, and I apologize to Mayor Gillan for a promise that I made to him to try to achieve these improvements by fishing season this year. That didn't get accomplished, and so I apologize for that, Mayor Gillan, and putting you in this situation as well. Dear Mayor Gillan, my letter dated June 2nd, Brookfield updated...June 2nd, 2014. Brookfield updated the city of Oswego on the Fisherman Alert System related action items discussed at our March 18th meeting between Brookfield Renewable Energy Group, Erie Boulevard Hydro Power, which is a Delaware-based company in the U.S. and owns the hydroelectric facilities here in New York State, the city and the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. At that meeting, in an effort to address the city's identified concerns, Brookfield agreed to investigate and evaluate the following FAS-related options. One, changing the directionality of the FAS speakers at both tailrace and at the dam. Two, eliminating the whoop sound and using FAS voice messaging only. Three, shortening the whoop duration or using a different sound to get fishermen's attention. Four, lowering the FAS volume. And five, installing an additional separate tailrace alarm at the powerhouse for through flows heading toward fishermen in the immediate area of the tailrace only. These items were identified to us by the city as some of the issues that we are encountering with our plan. To continue from the letter, as Brookfield previously indicated, each of these options is technically possible, but the investigation and evaluation of these options effectiveness at a conceptual level was still required. Brookfield had stated that it planned to engage an acoustical expert who specializes in emergency warning systems to further vet the proposed options as appropriate. Brookfield's primary criteria included and continue to include continuing to maintain fishermen's safety on the Oswego River at or above the current level, as well as minimizing the FAS's noise impact on nearby residents and businesses. Since making that prior report, Brookfield identified and retained services of an acoustical expert, ATI Systems Acoustical Technology Incorporated, that specializes in emergency warning and notification systems. ATI's past work includes wide-area outdoor warning and public alert systems for public and municipal use, as well as acoustical testing for the Federal Energy Management Agency, Occupational Safety and Health Administration, and other agencies. Field testing for this initial design phase is complete and was completed on July 21st. An engineering recommendations have been developed to reduce community spillover effect while preserving an effective warning system in the fishermen and at the riverbed. ATI's testing showed these recommendations to reduce community spillover effect by a significant amount, an average of eight decibels. These recommendations include changing the direction of the speakers, modifying the existing speakers to operate at lower wattage, building a speaker mount that will reach over the building and walkway bridge to... over the building and walkway bridge to be able to allow us to reposition the speakers, shortening the duration of the alert tone to no more than five seconds, so that's the tone that precedes the message, implementing a recommended activation sequence to reduce the overall duration of the tone message sequence. So tone once, verbal message repeat three times. If anyone, as I'm sure you do, realizes the existing tone is quite a bit longer and it repeats several times. And use, and then, using a single-frequency tone instead of a frequency-varying tone. We learned with, from our acoustical expert that the acoustical tone that we use has a low-frequency component that travels a great distance, and so we're trying to avoid that. Subject to FERC approval, Brookfield is prepared to implement these changes and to further evaluate the effectiveness, effectiveness of these options in the field. Brookfield is targeting, at September 29th, submitted to FERC requesting approval of the proposed modification to the existing Fisherman Alert System. Brookfield would appreciate the city's patience while all parties work through this difficult process in a continued effort to ensure fishermen's safety in as non-intrusive a way as possible for the surrounding community. In addition, I implore the council, if they have a resolution tonight, to vote no in regard to that resolution. We've taken great strides as Brookfield and, and the council members that have been on the Public Safety Committee that the mayor first started with Mayor Bateman, and Fire Department, and the New York State DEC. It is our feeling it is very important to continue to reinforce the restricted zone as identified in the enforcement agreement. And the PFD and other public safety requirements save lives, and as always, Brookfield is committed to work with our stakeholders and to resolve this issue. We acknowledge, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Toy's statements. Mr. Toy is accurate. We did our research, looked at the enforcement agreement, and we do not have enforcement ability beyond the zones that are marked with the city. So I apologize to Mr. Toy for the experience that he went through. However, we are required, through our procedures and our public safety plan, to request and to alert and alarm all those fishermen in those high-hazard zones and in any zone of the riverbed when there's high flow. I think the city best acknowledged it in the authorization, in the resolution for authorization of these on, uh, in Resolution 428. It says, "Whereas the City of Oswego is the owner of certain lands and improvements located in the vicinity of the facility, including the High Dam and portion of the bed of the Oswego River. Whereas the city and Erie have identified areas in the Oswego River located downstream of High Dam," not of Varick, of High Dam as well, "and the facility which are hazardous areas for public recreation and represent a significant public safety concern, high danger areas. Whereas representatives of Erie, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, the Department of Environmental Conservation, met with Mayor Bateman and representatives of the city to formulate a plan to protect members of the public who enter into such high danger areas for the purpose of fishing and public recreation." I think that says it best. The High Dam is a facility that Erie Boulevard operates above Varick. Anything that happens at High Dam, we have to react to at Varick, as the members of the city engineering department are aware, and perhaps members of the council through their public safety working groups. It is vitally important, we feel, to maintain the PFD enforcement zone and the Varick area to prevent further deaths. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Harry Todes. Harry, go up.
Harry Todes from 300 East Second Street. And the gentleman's right. We need protection, but they get carried away. You don't need to be protected when the river's running 1500 and they raise it to 2,000. I know, I live at ground zero, I've invited them to my house. I can't even open my windows because of their siren. Their lights. There's no reason for their lights to be on at night. I have to close my blinds because their lights flash in my bedroom. Mr. Gillon knows. I bought one of the crappiest houses on the road. I spent $75,000 bucks to look at your lights and can't open my windows. I agree, safety's important, but when the river's running 1500 and you raise it to 1,700, it raises the river, I might be running maybe three inches, and if that's a danger to somebody, they don't belong out there. And that's all I have to say. And I agree with the gentleman back here. I don't know him, but I agree 100% with him. And I agree with him. You need safety, but these people are getting crazy about safety rather than make, he said the magic word, you need to be safe, but you can't be ridiculous at the same time. You know, if the river's 5,000, how many ti, how many times does a siren go off, you know, on one cycle? I can tell you, 32 times. Not seven or several, 32 times in five minutes. Me, you, Mr. Gillon, we sat and we had a discussion about a man on a blowhorn, did we not?
Yes, we did.
And I said, "If you have a problem with somebody in the river, pick up your cellphone, call the police, let them come up and handle it." I don't want to listen to a guy on a horn at 5:30 in the morning. I shouldn't have to. I shouldn't have to close my windows, and I should not have to close my blinds at night for lights in a river that are not needed. They're not needed at night. People aren't allowed to fish in here at night. If they go in there at night, they deserve whatever they get. If a drunk driver drinks at a bar and he kills himself on the way home and doesn't hurt anybody else, he got what he deserved. I don't deserve to be punished for nonsense. I agree with safety, I agree with Brookfield Power with your safety, but they gotta do something to make it so it's not ridiculous. And this, right now, for the last three years, has been totally ridiculous. They build docks in the river for people to sit on, for safety, and then they tell them you can't sit on them. They put floats out there, attach the poles, and they holler at people when they sit on them. They put cables across the river that I'm supposed to get a key so I can get through, and when I go to get the key, the guy that's gonna give me the key says, "Well, you know, it might unlock, it might not unlock the lock because it's the same lock from last year and it might be rusty." Okay? So why should I take the key? I'm gonna say like I said before, when I hook a cable going across the river on my drift boat, somebody's gonna get sued. Now, if you worry about fishermen, great. Worry about me when I got two or three people in the boat and I hooked your cable and I smashed into the pole and three of them drowned and I get injured, then we'll have another discussion about this because it just isn't right. And that's all I gotta say. And I have no argument against this one, straight down.
Thank you, Mr. Todes. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Brookfield, shame on you. Look, I don't remember any problems up there before Brookfield took over. There may have been some drownings up there, they might have covered up, I don't know, but I never heard of anybody getting hurt up there before you guys took over. And as far as that alarm system, I thought you guys would know better unless you don't live on a river yourself. How would you like to listen to that? You know? I mean, I could hear it out in Scribe if I wanted to get out there and listen to it. I just can't figure out why the company would install that kind of a system. I know you got sued, okay? I'm very aware of what's going on up there. I just don't understand the hugeness of this alarm system you had up there. I don't know, maybe it belonged up in Niagara Falls. Do you guys run Niagara Falls up there at all? Because that's louder than hell up there. It's louder than this river could ever put out. I just don't understand why it takes sudden emotions to get you guys, big companies, not only you, big companies, to respond, okay? Million-billion-dollar companies don't respond right away to any kind of legislation or at least a little wording in a letter, correspondence, I guess the word is called, and say, "Come on, fix it up for us, will ya?" You know? And you can take a look down there, as, what does the toy said back there? They used to have tons of fishermen down there, and the DEC only had a job down there. There was at least five of them undercover down there. Now they're not down there at all because there's nobody there fishing anymore. They're all up in Pulaski. Do you guys run Pulaski there, up there? Because get up there and give them hell because we need them back down here again. Who needs them up there? We're not making any money. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, okay?
Thanks. Anyone else? Hearing none, then I adjourn the public session. We'll go right into the regular meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Senator, the mayor?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Todd?
Here.
Hail Sir Walker?
Here.
Hail Sir Barlow?
Here.
Hail Sir Van Buren?
Here.
Hail Sir Campbell?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. I do have one proclamation under the mayor's report, and that's announcing Fire Prevention Week, October 5th through the 11th of 2014. Whereas the City of Oswego is committed to ensuring the safety and security of those living and visiting our city, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,300 people in the United States in 2012, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 365,000 home fires, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported homes fires in half, and whereas three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms, and whereas when smoke alarms should have been, should have operated but did not do so, it was usually because batteries were missing, disconnected, or dead. And whereas the City of Oswego residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each separate sleeping area and on every level of the home, and whereas the City of Oswego first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the 2014 Fire Prevention Week theme, working smoke alarms save lives, test yours every month, effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us the time to get out safely. Now therefore, I, Thomas W. Gillon, Mayor of the City of Oswego, do hereby proclaim October the 5th through the 11th, 2014, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and I urge all the people of the City of Oswego to test their smoke alarms at least every month by pushing the test button and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Oswego Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2014, dated September 22nd, 2014. That's the only comment I have. Is there any comments from the councilors? Councilor Todd?
This is intended to address Mr. Owen. I found it quite interesting, the first terms you used when discussing this, whereas that you guys agreed to investigate and evaluate. At no point does it say you're going to change it. We've tried unsuccessfully for two and a half years to negotiate with you on this and have been completely ignored. It is only now that tonight, when we're gonna strip this power from you, and let me assure you, we will strip it from you, that you now want to come and talk about this. I mean, this is tantamount to legislating Mount Everest. Mount Everest has more desk per year on it than the Oswego River. If you choose to go on the river and fish, that's your right. At no point ever, and I've read the Supreme, did we authorize you to be the policing agency for the river. And we're going to make sure you don't have that ability after this evening. If this continues, the next thing I'll bring to committee as an RFP to seek alternate bids on running that background. I mean, this is unbelievable that it has to take two and a half years. I hope whoever it was that was on that blowhorn that endangered that man's life has been fired. I'm guessing he probably hasn't, but he should be. I will file the police report. This is unbelievable it took two and a half years. The only reason you're here tonight at the table is because you're afraid we're gonna take that away. And we are going to. Nothing that goes on in this city should take two and a half years. And you've ignored us, and you've tried to procrastinate and do everything you can to stall so that you didn't have to change this. Well, we're gonna take that ability out of your hands tonight.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments? Yes, Councilor Enright.
Yeah, this is in regard to the vacant building proposal, and I just wanted to note that the New York State Conference of Mayors and that group also recognize the detrimental effect that these vacant buildings are happening on communities. And what people don't know is sometimes these vacant buildings, their taxes are paid and there's no red flags that immediately go up, and the city doesn't own them, yet there were, there's no real guideline on, and what, what these property owners will do. And we have buildings falling down, we have animals in there, and some of these buildings are within feet of other residents, and there are fear for their life, fear that there may be a fire. So this is something that's been long overdue, and I'm very pleased with the work that Mrs. Casamento has done, and I applaud that group and bringing this forward.
Thanks, sir. Just as a side comment to that, I just, I was at NICOM last week, and we did attend some classes on the vacant properties, and it is a problem, not just in our community but throughout the state of New York, particularly in upstate New York. So I think we're moving forward in a positive direction with that. Are there any other comments from the council? Hearing none, will the clerk please call Resolution 402?
Resolution 402, number 8, 2014.
Councilor Campbell, Councilor Van Buren, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilor Barlow?
Yes.
Councilor Van Buren?
Yes.
Councilor Enright?
Yes.
Councilor Myers?
Yes.
Councilor Todd?
Yes.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Councilor Myers?
Yes.
Councilor Todd?
Yes.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Please call Resolution 404.
Resolution 404 would approve use of public space at the request of Gregory Cole, owner of property located at 70 East O'Nida Street, in order to install a parking area.
Councilor Walker, Councilor Van Buren, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilor Barlow?
Yes.
Councilor Van Buren?
Yes.
Councilor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilor Enright?
Yes.
Councilor Myers?
Yes.
Councilor Todd?
Yes.
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 Resolution passes 70.
Please call Resolution 405.
Resolution 405 would approve use of public space at the request of Theodore Jarrett, owner of property located at 230 West A Street.
Council Barlow and Councilor Campbell, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilor Barlow?
Yes.
Councilor Van Buren?
Yes.
Councilor Todd?
Yes.
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 Resolution 70.
Please call Resolution 406.
Resolution 406 would approve use of public space at the request of Trinity United Methodist Church in order to place advertising signs for their new EU sale to be held Saturday, October 4th, 2014.
Council Myers and Council Van Buren, any discussion? Council Campbell?
Your Honor, I just saw an email a couple of weeks ago that Council Van Buren sent out regarding what seems to be an overabundance of signs that tend to crop up on public space, and I just wanted to thank the Trinity United Methodist for going through the process, for putting the signs up, and I just would, would ask and remind folks, if you don't have a permit to put a sign up, it's gonna be taken down if it's posted on public space. And that's, we're trying to, we're trying to, yeah, bring some order to this whole process and this system and keep our roadways and, and public walkways right of ways looking decent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Council Van Buren?
Echo Council Campbell's sentiments. I appreciate the comments, and I'll also just like to say thank you to Trinity United Methodist. They were one of the bigger offenders that were constantly putting signs up without permits, so I appreciate them starting to go through the process.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Yes.
Council Buren?
Yes.
Council Campbell?
Yes.
Council Enright?
Yes.
Council Myers?
Yes.
Council Todd?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Please call Resolution 407.
Resolution 407 would approve use of public space at the request of Journey of Faith United Methodist Church in order to host the 28th Annual Craft Walk to be held on Sunday, October 19th, 2014.
Council Enright and Council Myers, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Council Barlow?
Yes.
Council Van Buren?
Yes.
Council Campbell?
Yes.
Council Enright?
Yes.
Council Myers?
Yes.
Council Todd?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
The resolution passes 70.
Please call Resolution 408.
Resolution 408 would approve use of Bertha Park for a wedding to be held Saturday, October 18th, 2014.
Council Enright, Council Barlow, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Resolution 408 would approve use of Bertha Park for a wedding to be held Saturday, October 18, 2014.
Counselor Enright, Counselor Barlow, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Enright?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 409.
Resolution 409 would approve a sign permit to Jim Bell, owner of property located at 155 West F Street.
Counselor Barlow and Counselor Todd, any discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to thank Jim Bell, if anybody's been bought that building and seen what he's done with it. It looks fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 410.
Resolution 410 would accept a donation of playground equipment and other amenities from the Oswego Renaissance Association through a grant provided by the Novellus Corporation.
Counselor Van Buren and Counselor Capelitz, is there any discussion? Counselor March?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Counselor Van Buren, the ORA, and Novellus. This is going to be a great project. I want to thank Eric, he's done a lot of footwork on this, and this is really going to spruce up that East Park area. Thank you, Mr. Van Buren.
Yes, Counselor Van Buren.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate the comments. I'd also like to thank Amy Birdso for all her help with this. You know, we worked together on getting this grant, and I'd like to thank Novellus and the ORA for submitting and providing this equipment. It's much needed, it's a corridor from downtown to neighborhoods. And I think having this redeveloped and a real plan for landscaping and playground equipment is going to be great for the area. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments? I'd like again to echo that same sentiment. You evaluate a community by its investments, and particularly in their children, and that says a lot about our community. We take a lot of criticism for some of the things that are happening, some in our control, some that's not. This is a very positive thing for the city, and I'm very proud of the fact that we've been able to work together with our planning department and get grants so that the taxpayers can get the benefit of updated parks, safe parks, and it says a lot for our kids, too. So, any other comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Thank you. Please call Resolution 411.
Resolution 411 would approve proposed amendment to the City of Oswego, Chapter 85, Buildings Vacant.
Counselor Van Buren, Counselor Capelitz, any discussion? Counselor Capelitz?
Very briefly, just to echo again sentiments that were expressed earlier, thanking former counselor, County Cosmeto, and the members of the Quality Life Committee for all the work on this code. And I think what we've put together here is something that really sets us up for great improvements in our neighborhoods. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counselor Van Buren?
Thank you. I want to say thank you to Connie for the work that she did. I think she provided us with a really solid framework for something that we can move forward. A lot of the things that are in this were something the city was lacking in terms of standards for our vacant structures. Just some of the simple things like boarding up the windows and also painting those boards so that there are less of an eyesore on the neighborhood, so that there's better aesthetics there. And I think there's a decent fine structure in there to get engagement from the owners of these properties so that we can see some results. I really hope this is strictly enforced, and I appreciate all the work that went into making it. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 412.
Resolution 412 would authorize the mayor to sign Change Order Number 3 with Joseph J. Lane Construction Incorporated for project modifications to the combined sewer separation project.
Counselor Capelitz, Counselor Van Buren, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yeah.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 413.
Resolution 413 would approve a bid submitted by Mason Company for the repair and replacement of panels at the Oswego Animal Shelter.
Counselor Myers and Counselor Barlow, any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Please call Resolution 414.
Resolution 414 would authorize the City Chamber to create a complete amendment to the 2014 budget.
Counselor Capelitz, Counselor Myers, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Please call Resolution 415.
Resolution 415 would approve the purchase of an existing sanitary force lane on Byer Road and further approve transfer accounts from the contingent account to the Department of Public Works for the same.
Counselor Capelitz and Counselor Myers, any discussion? Counselor Capelitz?
Your Honor, we had quite a little discussion about this at committee, and I just want to remind folks that this is really an investment in our city. And I know there's arguments that can be made on both sides about the ability to move on some of the outer ends of the city and abandoning our inner city. And I don't see it as abandoning our inner city. In fact, we're making some great commitments to central city as well as the outskirts. The estimate is that within three to four years after the city puts this money up, the money will be returned, and/or the costs will be reimbursed by, collected by the city. And as far as additional services, we still have to plow snow out there, we still have to maintain roads, we still have, there's no sidewalks to maintain. In fact, it's a win-win for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
No.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
The resolution passes 6-1.
Please call Resolution 416.
Resolution 416 would approve a change order for municipal buy software and further transfer accounts from the contingent account to the City Assessor's Office for the same.
Counselor Van Buren, Counselor Barlow, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 417.
Resolution 417 would approve a transfer of funds from within the east side wastewater treatment plant.
Counselor Walker and Counselor Myers, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Capelitz?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 418.
Resolution 418 would approve a transfer of funds from within the west side wastewater treatment plant.
Counselor Todd and Counselor Enright, any discussion? Counselor Van Buren?
Just have a second, Your Honor. Just want to look at something real quick. I just believe at committee Counselor Todd had requested that a RFP for the transfer and disposal of the waste to the previous company be authorized within one of these resolutions. And I didn't see the amendment there. I just wanted to hear Todd's opinion on it. Can we do it now and then do anything forth?
Counselor Todd, that was for you. It's absolutely up to you. I just wanted to make sure that you understood what was going on before we were going on it.
I'd like to see it included, but it's going to hold this up. Do it, and we'll seek it right after this in a fragile minute.
That's, I fully support whichever direction you want to go. I just wanted to make sure that you didn't lose it.
It's going to be taken out of there, and we'll put it on committee for next week.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other comments? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 419. Counselor Todd, Counselor Enright, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Yes.
Please call Resolution 420. Counselor Myers, Counselor Walker, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Counselor Myers?
Yes.
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 Please call Resolution 428. Counselor Todd, Counselor Capelitz, any discussion? Counselor Todd?
This is my open experience on the failures of negotiation at times. This is really shame on us for letting it take two and a half years to completely single-handedly destroy an industry here in the City of Oswego and taking the time to wait this long to think that maybe we could make progress on it when we couldn't. I'm very happy to see that this is coming forward this evening, and hopefully we'll see changes. And if not, I fully intend to bring a bill and try and find a different person to operate that plant. So hopefully this will go through and see any problems.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Capelitz?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I also just want to, you know, sometimes we all kind of look at Counselor Todd and we say, where are we going with this one? And I think we went absolutely the right place. And after having had some time to reflect on, you know, our committee meeting last week, it just doesn't take much to listen to the fishermen and the folks who live in this community who tell me that they live a mile away from that dam, and why do I care whether or not the water levels are rising? And they hear it every day. I think, you know, we certainly sat down all in good faith at the time and trying to capture the whole essence of public safety. And I think we forgot a few other things during that whole discussion. And I think the last several years has taught us a great many lessons that we need to reflect on and certainly, I guess, take a look at what we've done here with a whole new and fresh perspective that includes a lot of history, and especially over the last two years. It was a year and a half ago that I remember having a conversation in your conference room, Mayor, with FERC on the telephone, saying we'd had enough. And that's after hearing from residents for how long. And here we are, you know, a year and a half later, still wondering how we're going to reduce community spillover events. I don't want to reduce it, I want to eliminate it. I want people that live along this river to be able to open their windows I, I want people that live along this river to be able to open their windows in the springtime and the summertime and open their blinds so that they can enjoy the beauty that this river has. We have created a bunch of cables and big orange balls in that river that to me have taken away from the pure beauty and majesty of the Oswego River. There was a day, and I used to fish this river thirty years ago, before the Linear Park was here, and appreciated and enjoyed, enjoyed that fishery. The Linear Park brought folks in here by the thousands. I remember shoulder to shoulder, businesses flourished, hotels and restaurants and gas stations and bars and, and sports tackle businesses, et cetera. And we have, we have effectively decimated that part of our economy because of an unfortunate accident, two fishermen lost their lives. We don't have the same system on the Salmon River. I believe what they do there is they post the day before when the river is going to rise and lower and you read about it either on a message that comes from the, from the power company or posted on the river. And I know there's been fishermen that have been lost in the Salmon River as well, but we have taken, we have taken a very hard line approach here. In the day of cell phones, and I saw somebody hollering or showing their cellphone, you know, they could probably put an app together, probably ninety percent of those fishermen carry a phone. You could have a little warning system right on your own phone that would tell you, let, 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 let them buzz them in their pockets while they're fishing that the water level's rising. Technology is a lot different today than it used to be. I think there's some better options here and I think by revoking this agreement, it will force us all to sit down again and come up with what I think is a practical and reasonable solution. And I also fully expect with what we've done with our fishery and what Brookfield has helped us do, that we need to rebuild that. And that's going to take some financial considerations from all of us, including Brookfield. We have taken, we have taken an economy and we have tourism economy and we've, we've torn it to bits. I, sorry that it's come to this, but I think it's, it is the right and appropriate approach at this point in time. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? Counselor Van Geren.
Thank you. I, I agree with a lot of the points that Counselor Todd and Counselor Capelots just made. Over the past several years, I've heard from dozens of residents in my area and I continue to hear from them daily, whenever the siren goes off repeatedly throughout the day and I know it's a problem. I, I will say thank you to Mr. Elmer and his crew and the FERC for meeting with us and attempting to make changes and recommendations through the FERC. I, I, believe me, I understand it's a federal agency, we have to run through the due diligence of that and it's, it's never a quick process when you're dealing with any level of government. But I do agree that the two years that it has taken to get to the point where we are as of the May meeting, it took excessively long. We are partly responsible for that, I believe, Counselor Capelots, now that on the head when we tried to negotiate, you know, we made a phone call to the FERC just to say, you know, what can you do for us, make changes on this? That, that took us to bring them to the table and Brookfield to the table to really establish what those problems were. There was a time, you know, many years ago when the siren went off and it, it was a female voice, I believe, at the time, that it really didn't disturb too many folks. It was still alerting the fishermen, but at the same time, the impact on the neighborhoods and the quality of life was greatly reduced. And I think that there's a level that can be met there that we can still do this. I will say that in terms of this agreement, I think there's a lot of things in here in terms of safety that do work, but at the same time, the, the residents in my area and the other areas that can hear him, hear them should not be dealing with someone on a bullhorn arguing with fishermen in the river, which I've certainly gone down there when I've gotten calls from residents and have heard them arguing back and forth between a fisherman in the river and a gentleman on a bullhorn. So I know it's happening. So as I said at the committee meeting, I certainly support Counselor Todd and the other counselors in efforts to rejuvenate the fishery in this city and I will, I will agree to move forward with this. I hope that some of the aspects of this can be revisited though and we can bring some of these in. I think some of the safety measures that we've taken have increased the safety of the river greatly and I think that's something that we shouldn't get lost while we try to move forward with getting an expedited response. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any, yes, Counselor Todd.
The only thing I'll say, and I've said, I've said this from the get-go, is government shouldn't be in the business of legislating people's personal choices. If somebody makes a personal choice going to that river and hasn't been able to figure out when water levels are rising, they keep coming up to get out of the river, it's not our business to be involved in doing that. People have a choice on how they go about their daily lives. It's no different than how we have us. You know that there's risk, you know that there's things that could happen on it and people still choose to go up there every year. If you choose to go in the river, it is a fast-moving, as a gentleman said, big river. And if you choose to go in there looking for a fish, you can't get out of the river when the waters are rising. We shouldn't have to be in the business of legislating it just simply so that shareholders and other people that own businesses don't have to fight the legal costs to fight court decision making. And that's really what it comes down to. We end up legislating so that people don't have to take the time to fight things in court because it's easier and cheaper to settle than it is to fight it in court. And the people of this city shouldn't have to continue to suffer that.
Counselor Van Geren.
Just like a committee, I completely agree with you, Counselor, and that's exactly the point I was trying to make, not trying to make light of the situation that happened, but you know, this, this arose for the same reason that we have caution hot on every cup of coffee because people can't take responsibility for themselves and the choices that they make. I, I completely agree with you and I, believe me, nothing is lost on that point.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Barlow.
Thanks, Your Honor. Mr. Toy is a actual constituent of mine, so I just want to applaud him and thank you for coming up and speaking up and just showing the impact of how this situation's had on your fishing experience in the Oswego River. Larry from the Salmon Shops here, his business has been severely impacted by this whole situation. So, these are just two members of our community that have really, you know, felt the, felt the impacts from this. Appreciate Brookfield sending a representative, but it's just, the fishing in this city really was something vital to our economy economically and I think most Oswagonians had a connection, whether it was fishing the river, walking the river, really, really was a vital part of our community and they managed to really destroy something that was important to us. So I support Counselor Todd a hundred percent and I'm looking forward to passing this tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Please call Resolution 428. Counselor Myers. One second. Counselor Enright, any discussion? Counselor Capelots.
Yeah, I, I just have one question. I, I do remember we had a discussion about appraisal on this property.
Yes. I think we have not yet got an appraisal. Appraisal on that site. City Attorney can comment on that.
The Assistant City Attorney, Tom Reynolds, was, advised me that he was going to seek an appraisal. I have not seen one yet, so I can only presume that we do not have one at this time.
Counselor Van Geren.
I spoke with the city assessor today about that. I called and asked her about an appraisal and what, you know, what you would need to have the ability to do that. She is not certified to have it. It requires M.A.I. certification, which is a fairly hardcore level of appraising, just to put it that way. It's, it's for industrial and commercial. They could appraise the steam plant, you know, complete nuts and bolts, just to give you an example of how in-depth. We do not have an appraisal based on that. They can be fairly expensive. I did ask her how much one may cost and she reached out to the commercial and appraiser that we use during our tax time and she let me know that he had already done some preliminary legwork because there was a chance that this was going to trial. So they had, he has initial data on it. He quoted us three thousand dollars to have it appraised and it will take thirty days. I understand that there's a little sticker shock involved with that. I had talked to a few real estate agents to give me an idea of how much one could cost and a commercial appraisal for twenty-six acres of industrial property could run easily into the trial. Yeah, this is obviously a significant reduction. If we're talking about this tonight because we're looking to accept his purchase offer, my vote is, is no. I, I think that, I think we do need to get an appraisal done. I think we have hired or accepted the proposal of a new real estate company to handle our real estate transactions and I think we should give this a chance on market and see what potential money we're having here. I, I definitely see the value in the offer. It's improved significantly from what's been offered before, but I think just in terms of what that property needs to be used for, I think an appraisal to get an actual value of what the property could be and a real shot actually being put on the market is necessary for something like this.
Mr. Counselor Myers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I got a little difference of opinion on that. This, this property's been vacant for five, six years, seven years, and it just sits there and sits there and nobody's knocking our doors down to buy this piece of property. I'm all in favor of getting rid of this, put it back on the tax rolls. And then if the appraisal comes in afterwards and it raises the price of the value, the new owner's going to have to pay that anyways. I, I just think that this property's been sitting idle too long. I know there is some brownfield that's going to be their problem now, not ours. So I'm in favor of getting rid of this piece of property, just to put it back on the tax rolls. Plus, it's going to put more business out there and probably employ more individuals on this site. That's right.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Enright.
I'd like to ask a question of Counselor Myers. Is there a time restraint here that we're talking about on this property that, you know, that, why we couldn't wait for a, you know, an industrial appraisal of this property to go to move forward? I, I feel that, as Counselor Myers does, if this has been on the market for five or six years, then, you know, why not move it? But I'd like to move it and, and go through the proper protocol and, and have an idea of what this is worth, have the industrial appraisal, but I wouldn't want to lose, I want to know what's at stake here if...
Okay, yes, Counselor Myers.
I, I believe what's at stake is the, the individual that wants to purchase this needs to let the company that he will be storing things there for, to let them know his plan of action. If, if he doesn't have any place available for the individual business, then this business will go outside of the city of Oswego and head to Watertown. So that's one of the other reasons why I would like to see this site used, is that it is here in the city of Oswego and the product stays here in the city of Oswego rather than go to Watertown.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Enright.
Yes, just for the city attorney, if this property has been on the market for five or six years, wasn't there ever appraisal that was ever done by, I don't know if it was Century Twenty-One that, that had it in the past? There must have been some kind of dollar value that was put on this in the past. Would, would you be aware of anything like that?
Counselor, this property was obtained from the county technical closure and it wasn't five or six years ago, it was recent event, maybe two or three. And it has never been put on the market. It wasn't listed since Century Twenty-One at the council's request. The council requested to hold the property for possible city uses, so it's never been listed for sale. This is an offer that I understand came in from the prospective purchaser and came to the council in a previous executive session. I did not attend.
Thank you.
The city attorney, what's the assessed value right now? You got that in front of you?
Yes, if you're willing to wait just a minute, I have it in one of these piles.
Okay.
While we're waiting, does anyone have any other comments? Yes, Counselor Van Geren.
I, I believe we as a council made a policy that we wouldn't sell any properties without listing it with our agent because of some issues we got into before with the offers that came in too early. And I believe my point was that this was never marketed and it did not have a chance to be marketed and I would like to make that chance. My, my case remains the same. I understand Counselor Myers' comments about the, adding it back to the tax rolls and that's, that's, believe me, that's never lost, especially in the times that we're in. I think with a property like this though, and the situation that we put it in, I, I agreed with Counselor Capelots when we said that we should hold off the property and see, you know, what our options were as a city before we let it onto the market and started taking offers. I still think that an appraisal and some time to actually see this on the market with some legitimate resources put behind it from our real estate company, marketing it, then we should see what options we have then.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, Counselor Capelots.
Well, you know, I just, for folks that don't have what we have in front of us, I mean, this isn't, we're not giving it away. I mean, we're looking at a, a value here of four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So this is, this is a significant sale for the city and, you know, of course, a portion of that is offset by our ability to still utilize this, this property for five years. There's a value to that, that's incorporated into that four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, but I believe the cash price, Counselor, is somewhere around, I think it's two fifty in the agreement, a quarter, quarter million dollars. And I'm sure that that significantly, I don't know what the taxes were owed on this thing from the beginning, but I do remember when we had discussions about it, that, you know, we all still hold very high hopes for what's, what's happening in the Mitchell Street area and certainly with what the port's been doing with rail and rail improvement and intermodal transportation and I do know that this plays a very, very critical role and I, but I will also say that, you know, Mr. Holbrook, in my opinion, from what I, I, I know him, say hello to him, but I, I'm familiar with some of the businesses he runs and he operates. He's a first-class businessman, as far as I know, and I know, you know, this is where, this becomes a bit of a, a little bit of turmoil here in my own mind about you want to move this thing forward and you want to do it because we have a, a willing buyer. And I think as a city, we just need to make sure that we are doing this in the best interest of the people that we represent. And are there other questions that should be answered prior to this? But I also know that we've got, you know, he's a businessman and he's got some decisions he needs to make sooner rather than later. And as a city, we're always good at later rather than sooner. So.
Counselor Myers.
Thank you, Your Honor. Counselor Capelots, I, I do agree with a lot of that and, yeah, we, we like to put all our property out to real estate, but we've had, we have sold property in the past year or two by not sending it out there. This is a significant offer. This puts it back on the tax roll. My thing is this, if we delay this, I don't know much longer is that going to sit there, guys? It's an eyesore now, it really is. And if you look at what the individual that wants to buy this, you look at his Seneca Street properties, he's got everything mowed, he's got it manicured. You could probably go down that road down on Mitchell Street, ask anybody in that second ward area, it's been an eyesore forever. We, we toured it. Most of us here toured that site. We know what's inside that site. It, it's terrible. And again, I'm, I'm just going to tell you, I'm in supporting getting this sold, put it back on the tax rolls. Yep, we do have somebody that represents and does our real estate here in the city, but this is no different than what we've done before in the past. So we're not trying to slide anything past the Realtor or anybody else. We have done this before. I believe the council has the sole say on what they do with property. Thank you.
Counselor Enright.
You know, I, I agree with, with Counselor Myers about the need to sell this and, you know, my concern is that we just follow the proper protocol and I think I'd be a hundred percent agreement with this and support this if, if this could somehow be placed through our, our contracted real estate person and I feel that's just the right way to do things, that's all. But I agree that this needs to move forward and I think, I think we need to put it on the tax roll.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Barlow.
Thanks. I agree, this offer's, it's not anything to, to not consider, it's a serious offer and I just, you know, I hope that when the counselors place their vote that we're being realistic, we can appraise it and assess it for whatever we want. I still don't see anybody marching in to, to move in here. This guy is a local businessman. He does business in the city already. Before we chase another business out of this city or prevent a business from starting up, let's be realistic and let's take advantage of this opportunity. Chances are, if it was a business trying to buy the place from outside the community, outside the city or outside the state moving in here, we'd all be jumping in our chairs, congratulating each other that we got a business from outside to move inside. So just because this guy's a local, he's trying to start another branch of business here, let's consider that and just be realistic. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? Counselor, Counselor Capelots.
Do we have, city attorney have information on current assessment and taxes, et cetera?
I can give you the amount of taxes that are owed on the property as of the time of foreclosure and that is two hundred and sixty-six thousand, eighty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. I cannot give you the assessed value, I thought it was in here, but I don't seem to have that.
Comments?
What will the sale price be listed as the property because he's only paying for half of this and the other half is in, I guess, a trade-in service for rental if he's only paying for two hundred and fifty thousand of this? What is the sale price listed as? And how's that going to change the assessment from what it will be? For what we're collecting taxes on and all that, just to...
The sale, the, the sale price is listed on the upper purpose of the tax, through the resolution. And the purpose offer is four hundred and ninety thousand dollars to be paid five hundred dollars as a deposit, forty-nine thousand, five hundred, which is a total of fifty thousand as, when the deed passes. And then the city will take back from mortgage in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Fees will be made, what's that, six percent interest over five to sixty months, which signs there would be a balloon payment, meaning that the entire remaining balance of the mortgage would be due. The remaining two hundred and forty thousand dollars would be a credit to the city as the amount of four thousand dollars per month for sixty months. On the building in the front that the T.P.W. is using and will continue to use over that time.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
Counselor Van Geren.
No.
Yes.
I'm going to support that because I feel this deal is definitely for the good of the community, so yes.
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Enright? Counselor Myers? Discussion? Counselor Enright.
I just want to say, this property here down in the end of Skylar Street in corner Governor Street has been an eyesore in the community for as long as I can remember and this is a move, I believe, that is really going to improve this whole area and I definitely believe this is in the best interest of the city.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments? Counselor Walker.
I'd just like to ask Mr. Enright, these are the trailers down at, on Skylar Street.
Yes, they are.
I just want everybody to know what they are, so...
They are, they are the, they are the trailers that are down there and these trailers will be taken away by current owners. The city will not be pulling these things out of there. They're, so this is a win-win situation, I feel, for the city. Thank you.
Counselor Van Geren.
Just want to thank Counselor Enright for his work in negotiating this, you know, as we work to improve the aesthetics and the overall appeal of our city. This is a huge traffic area and I think it's a great, great move for us to get these out of here. It's, they should, we never should have allowed something like that to be put in the city and, you know, I think it's great that Counselor Enright really took initiative to make sure that this was taken care of.
Yes, Counselor Myers.
Thank you, Your Honor. Also, I'd like to say thank you to Fran. I, I believe by getting these out of here, you just raised everybody's property values, I understand you have a lot of rentals down that way, but I think that's just going to be a huge, huge asset for us in the long run.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments? Questions? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Okay, we do have an executive session scheduled. Counselor Capelots and Counselor Myers.
Yes.
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 Now going to executive session?
It better be as good as it's been.
Come out of executive session. Counselor Kapowitz, Counselor Enright, second. Show hands. Okay. Let's see, we do have Resolution 422.
Resolution number 423 from the floor without committee consideration.
Counselor Van Buren and Counselor Kapowitz, please call the roll.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Kapowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 423.
Resolution 423 would authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment to the Power Purchase Agreement with National Grid.
Counselor Kapowitz, Counselor Van Buren, any discussion? Counselor Kapowitz.
Yes, Your Honor. I was hoping we were gonna have our consultant enlighten us a little bit. Is he here?
He said he was gonna be here.
For everybody who is here, so he can, he can talk in the technical terms that are required, but then we can, I'll talk in the elementary terms.
Good, your confusion with nuance.
I'll just say, I'll just say this. It was, it was in 1992 that this city, at the time, signed a power purchase agreement with then the Niagara Mohawk Power Corporation, and, and through December of 2022, there was an agreement to pay for the city to receive so much for its electricity that was selling at our dam and, and the, which was actually a lot more than the market rate is. And what we were required to do was establish what is affectionately known as a tracking account. And over the years, well, as a matter of fact, the balance of that account on December 31, 2013, and it's known as the adjustment account, has a positive balance in the amount of $11,530,591.93, and that's owed by the city to Niagara Mohawk. And if that isn't a sobering thought, to think that in December of 2022, this city would then have a, in my mind, it would just be devastating. I want to thank this mayor and this council, and certainly Mike Riley, our purchasing director who isn't here right now, but Mike is one that brought this to our attention many years ago, and we have hired, we did hire a consultant who has helped us to understand this agreement and negotiate a settlement. And this settlement will essentially allow December, the end of December 2022, I should say, this January 1 of 2023, it'll just be a New Year's Eve party and a New Year's, and a New Year's Day without any great financial consequences on the city, because what this agreement that we're about to pass does is essentially takes money that we have prepared, we have, we have budgeted in our budget and have assigned it essentially to paying down this tracking account so that this, this problem is effectively solved. And it's not without some belt tightening, and that certainly we, we all know that. We've made some great sacrifices here as a city, and we continue to do that, but this is just a cement of paying the bills and, and not kicking a can down the road. And I think it could have been just as easy for everybody here and this mayor to say, we don't need to deal with it. We'll wait for the next administration to deal with it, the next group of counselors. And I think everybody here stepped to the plate and, in fact, has come up with what in my mind is a, it's a historic agreement and solves a major problem.
Counselor Todd.
In layman's terms, so that people can understand this. Basically, 20 years ago, the city unlawfully entered a contract that caused us to get paid more than what the electricity was worth. Last year, we were notified that it was almost $11.5 million. If we chose to do nothing on it, in 10 years, it could be as much as $30-plus million if we don't choose to act on it. So not to saddle up further councils 10 years from now with the same problems that we now have to look at. We were aware of this last year during the budget process, which is why we incorporated this part in anticipation of this into this budget process. This is why we're addressing it now with a tune of $11.5 million instead of having to address it in 10 years. Whoever's on that council in the mayor's chair has a tune of $30 million when we really won't be able to afford it. So basically, unlawful contract, we're trying to fix it now.
Any other comments?
You said what?
Nice job, Counselor Todd.
Let's vote.
No, yes, Counselor Todd.
Barlow, do you need it all? We can just vote. That was the discussion phase. We're good to go. Call the roll.
No, we need, we have a second.
No, we already did all the...
No, we do, okay.
Call the roll.
Okay, call the roll.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Kapowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
Counselor Kapowitz. I'll call the roll.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren?
Yes.
Counselor Kapowitz?
Yes.
Counselor Enright?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Meeting is adjourned. Any gentlemen?